First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for their patience while we address some technical issues and it looks like we have full council and participants. So I'd like to call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 28th, 2020. First order of business, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Next item is roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fawkingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number five is the approval of the council agenda. Oh, first of all, city attorney.
Thank you. As we've noted in the past, section 610.015 of Missouri sunshine law provides that members of the city council who are not physically present in the council chambers can participate and vote on all matters when an emergency exists and the nature of the emergency is stated in the minutes. So I would ask that the minutes reflect again that we are still under the COVID-19 pandemic. Unfortunately, things have not gotten better, in some respects have gotten a little worse. And in keeping with the latest declaration from our county executive to protect each other as well as the public, the city council members and staff are participating in this meeting remotely. I just ask that the minutes reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any changes? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number six is a public forum. Do we have anyone that's raised their hand? Okay. Please keep, as far as members of the public, keep in mind that there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting also to share your thoughts with mayor and council. So with that, we'll move on to announcements. Do we have any announcements?
I have one announcement about MRH schools will open August 25th with full-time virtual instruction for grades K through 12. And I'm sure everybody's going to be real busy now getting ready for this. So I think they're having a session tonight or they, yeah.
Deciding about a possible delayed start, but are.
Thanks for letting me know. Yeah, I thought it was the 25th.
And any news on Wondering Wednesdays? We have, do we have that coming up tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, with that, I'll move on to item number eight, which is the approval of the July 14th, 2020 council meeting minutes and closed session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Are there any changes? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Item number nine is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to sign an amended redevelopment agreement between the city of Maplewood and Sunco LLC for the sun and station redevelopment area.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Discussion?
I just noted in the amendment, there was sort of one remaining reference to increasing the cap, which we're not doing. It was in section 3K. And when it talks about in the cooperative agreement, it says including the amount of the maximum cumulative tax abatement. So I'm guessing that probably should be struck.
What's that section again, Jenny? I'm sorry, I missed it.
It was 3K and it was after the defined term cooperative agreement. It says make course on changes provided here and then it says including the amount of the maximum cumulative tax abatement, which isn't changing.
It looks like it's redlined out.
Oh, so I'm looking at the clean version that's attached to this packet too. It's still in there, so.
Yeah.
Just, I didn't.
Redlined out. Thank you.
So we're talking K, just to make sure, including the amount of the maximum cumulative tax abatement. Is that correct, council?
Yeah, it's just in the clean version. That's where it's still.
No problem.
Okay. Are there any other changes or revisions? If not, we'll move on to roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawkingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Resolution 20-22 is approved.
Thank you. Item number 10 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance 5573 as amended by amending chapter 54, article three, weeds, sections 54 through 57 definitions.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion here?
No, I'd just like to thank you for adding updated, correct language for.
You get our attention, Jen.
We can thank some very observant residents for figuring, seeing that.
Okay, is there any other, any other comments or questions? In that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance 5573 as amended by amending chapter 54, article three, weeds, section 54 through 57 definitions.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number 11, bill 6143, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri to re-adopt and establish and make public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fawkingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Bill 6145 becomes ordinance number 5938. And to let everyone know, I just completed all the necessary paperwork for the city of Maplewood, so you will not be required to fill out a financial disclosure statement.
Is this bill 6145 or 43?
Three, sorry. And it's ordinance number 5938.
Thank you. Item number 12 is council communication.
I just had a question. Anthony, were we going to go through your memo and your city manager report?
Yeah, if you need to.
Yeah, so I can, I can wait till then. Okay.
Other council communication?
Yeah, I'll just bring up quickly, I know we talked about boards, commissions and all that kind of good stuff at last meeting. And I think we need to probably have a work session or something to begin that process because I'd really like to get the sustainability commission first and foremost back on track. Had some conversations with some of our council members and I think that's pretty important to get that particular commission up and running. You know, we're a very progressive community and we want to do some greener things, so to speak, and sustainability commission would be a perfect avenue for the council to take on some of that in terms of, you know, what we can do as a city and what ordinances, you know, we may need and those kinds of things. So anyway, I just want to throw that out there. Or anybody's hip, we can plan for a work session at some point here in the future shortly.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that. The, I want to process the feedback that we get from the board and commission chairs, but we need to address recruiting, terms of service, application process, nomination process, selection process, renomination, removal from board, responsibilities to the chair, selection of the chair, and what happens at the end of term. So there's a lot of topics that we need to address and I think that our board and commission chairs, I've gotten feedback from, from two of them so far and hopefully I can talk to the other ones and see what their opinions are and we can move forward and clarify and codify all these requirements in. That would be in ordinance, Anthony?
I just want to make sure, so we're not talking about having, we're not talking about having a work session yet. You just want to make sure to get, is that accurate?
We need to set something up pretty soon.
I thought that we were for inviting, I thought that we were going to start inviting a different board or commission council meeting to, or each month to come in and be a part of a regular, an agenda item in our council meeting.
We are, Mayor Greenberg reached out to all the chairs of the various boards and committees and I think council member Fawkingham, if I remember correctly, wanted to start with sustainability commission.
Right, but I mean, we weren't going to do it in a separate work session. We were going to build them into our city council meetings, but I do agree that we should have maybe a work session that's devoted to the, to talking through as a group the items that Barry just listed. And I think, thank you, Sean, for raising that. I think that we should go ahead and get that on the calendar.
So the question I have is from a staff level, do you want to do the work session before we start having people come in or would you like me to schedule them right away?
I think. To have a work session first.
Yeah, and then start having a, I mean, it doesn't really, timing isn't that important. I think that they're two separate things. One is that we need to kind of codify, like Barry said, all the processes for commissions and then also kind of start that work on sustainability commission and then have them start coming in at any time.
Would we like to have one at maybe the usual time, like six or 6:30 at the next meeting in August? Does that sound reasonable? I can make sure to put that on the agenda.
Yeah, for the meeting.
What, a work session?
Do we want to do 6:30 or do we want to do six?
I think there's a lot of topics here. I'd like, I'd like to go to six or 6:15.
We'll do six and then if we need to take it, that'll give us a little break time before our next council meeting. So I'll put it on next, on my calendar, but the first meeting in August, we'll do a work session at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, and Eleanor is correct. Besides just the logistics of the board itself, we need to discuss how they interact with council, you know, and what form their presentations make because as an advisory board to council, we could figure out everything else and if we don't interact with them, then, you know, then they consider, might consider their time not being respected. So I agree with that. Other council communication? Otherwise, we'll wait until the city managers report and discuss.
Sorry, I just wanted to check in on the equity piece. I had read through what Eleanor provided us last time and I didn't know what, you know, we're doing the training, but if there's some other sort of action item that we can move forward on, just wanted to throw that out there so we can move that process along. I don't know, were we thinking about RFP thing or I didn't know where that ended?
I feel like we should agree that we're going to talk about it and everybody like read through that, sort of refresh ourselves on what I sent out and what, what information we pulled together and come in and then talk about it.
Yeah, it would make sense to, to review the, the information, attend the seminar, the workshop, you know, so we have more of a direction and then, and probably do the research now, have the workshop, then begin our discussion. But yes, we do need to take a look at consultants and who we want to have help us, take us through this process if we, if we feel that we need someone.
And I do, I do want to like talk about before, we have to talk about the process before we talk about a consultant because we have to know what we need to do before we set a scope of work. So I would still, I think it would be good if we all committed to like reading through stuff and coming in prepared. So I don't know if we could maybe go ahead and schedule that as an agenda item.
Do you want to do it as an agenda item or you want to, I'll put it for the work session and then if we need to do it in a council meeting, we can do it during communication. I mean, it just, if we have extra time, it's up to you.
So I, having looked at it today, I think there's really a lot of information to consider and I think there's a lot of different pieces, so it may make sense to do a work session. It just seems like there's a lot of, lot of pieces to it, to discuss, but that's just my.
Well, if it's okay with the council, I'll put both items on for work session at the August 11th meeting at 6:00 PM.
I think that that's probably too much. I think we might need to space it out into the two work sessions.
So if we do the next one though, if we do the 25th or whatever, then that's after we've had our training too, so that's.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do board and commissions at the 11th and then the 25th we'll do equity, both at six.
That makes sense to me.
All right.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other council communication? Okay, move on to the mayor's report. We've exchanged some emails and as you know, I spoke with Bob Slaven on Friday. He is our consultant for the city manager selection process. He's narrowed the field down to approximately a dozen candidates and he has sent those candidates an additional round of questions to, so that he can narrow them down further. And those are, I believe, he said from Friday, it was about 10 days, so I don't know if that's 10 business days or, so it's going to be sometime next week that he'll have that information. And then as Mr. Traxler pointed out in his email, we'll be getting a weekly status report from Slaven management through the city, the acting city manager's office and he'll keep us informed as to what the status is and what, what, what has taken place. So that's all that I had. The city attorney, you have a report?
I have nothing to report, mayor. I would renew my offer to try to schedule a time for a, what I'm going to characterize loosely as a sunshine law seminar program. I've put it on many times. It usually lasts about an hour and a half, the two hours. I'd recommend that you do it on an off council night, so that's the only thing that we have. I hate to call it on the agenda because it's really not a public meeting. It's more of a conference type program that I would put on. It sounds like you all are very busy in August, so maybe we can, can look at your calendars for September and let Anthony know what your preferences are and I'll make myself available based upon your own schedule.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Did you say you would like it some other night besides a council meeting?
Otherwise, it gets pretty crammed up because my experience is that as you engage in this dialogue, it lasts an hour to an hour and a half and all of a sudden it becomes two hours. Kind of, it can be kind of fun to go through the various kinds of different scenarios. And so that's why I just, we do it on an off night.
I'm anxious to hear about body cameras since they're kind of the new technology. Imagine we'll be.
I think there's, there's a whole range of topics that we're going to have questions on, so looking for that to myself.
There's a lot of things to cover.
I'll send out an email tomorrow and we'll, I'll give some potential dates. I'll check with city council first to make sure he's available, then I'll send out several options for everybody. We'll get something scheduled.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to the city managers' report.
I believe council member Schmidt had some questions about the, about the items on the memo to the council.
Yeah, just starting with, I just, I appreciate you giving us this information about sort of like how we're dealing with mask wearing and I just, I know we've had a lot of questions from the public about it and both on or at our meetings and then I've had constituents emailing me and just, I just thought maybe it'd be helpful if we kind of, sort of, you know, walked through it completely sort of on here so people hear that. And I guess the way I'm understanding it, like as, you know, Maplewood employees are required to wear masks when they're interfacing with the public, correct? And then also when they're with each other, if they can't be six feet apart, is my understanding? Yes. Or moving through the building. And I guess, I just want to clarify because we had some questions about police and first, other first responders. Do they follow the same guy, those same guidelines or do they have separate that they're, that they follow?
Same guidelines.
Okay, so if they're in a meet, like, so for instance, maybe like moving forward when we have our conversation with the police and mayor, if they're sitting together, they would be masked or they would be separated?
Yeah, actually, and I didn't see it, but I do know I met with community development director Laura Miller and we had the last with the mayor and the chief of police, I know we had two in each conference room, actually.
Okay.
He measured out, I don't even, I told her to put a little piece of tape there just in case anyone questions. I don't know if she did because then that way they could at least see.
Okay, and I didn't see that one either because it was during a workday, so.
I didn't see, but that she was going to do it, I'm assuming it was done.
Okay, great.
There's in the conference room right next to my office, if you know, and then two in the council chambers as well. So we'll, we'll definitely do that. I will, we'll say that there was a, something on a Facebook post and I brought it up where there was something about a fireman becoming belligerent at a gas station. There was some local information out there and it turned out, one of the firemen actually called or knew the person that posted it and said, hey, you know, who did this? We want to address this. And it turned out it was not, it was in Maplewood. They were a firefighter, but it was not a Maplewood employee because we figured the uniform, the particular uniform was a completely different color than we would even use. We know where it came from. I'm not really going to get into that, but the bottom line is they saw a firefighter, they were in Maplewood, they assumed it was a Maplewood firefighter and it was not the case. And I have been checking with employees and we've been sending out updates and reminders to employees as well since that went into place. I think we're in pretty good there, council member Schmidt.
Great, that's, that's good. I just wanted to, because I know a lot of people had questions about that, so I think it's helpful to sort of lay it out there. And the other thing was, the parks, it seems like we're having a lot of issues with our police tape system and it's taking a lot of resources to like keep going and putting it up. I didn't know, I was at Police Park again last Friday and they have that orange fencing that is like covering the structure and around it, that it's really hard to get in. I didn't know if that would be, you know, a better thing to use because I'm getting, I'm seeing a lot on social media and then I'm getting a lot of people, you know, it's very hard for kids because the skate park, I know it's a nightmare and I know people just come right back and they do it, it's just, it's, it's hard when people see that and then I just, it seems like maybe if there's a better way, we can.
I'm sure we, if we don't have some, I know exactly, you're kind of almost talking about, like I said, the bright orange kind of thin.
Yeah, and it's like a fence, yeah.
We can do that for sure.
I've got, I've got 50 feet of that that I just rolled up from my construction project here, so please take it off my hands.
Where is it? We'll come by and pick it up. That's okay if we get that?
Oh, yeah. And if you zip tie that, it's going to take them a while. You know, it was a pain to, to put up and a pain to take down, so.
Well, you saw, you saw my memo and literally I had them put the tape up at the park again. I went about, I think it was like 11:30 or 12, or whatever the time was, I went to eat. I came back 35 minutes later, not only were the exact same kids back there, but there were a couple of parents taking photos of their kids skateboarding. So I mean, skate park is going to be the toughest just because there's not a lot of green space, but what, I think maybe your orange fencing idea is a good idea and we'll try it. I mean, I've even, where some cities put sand in the skate, and I'm not looking to do that, but then the kids started playing in the sand, so it's kind of, I mean.
I mean, I know it's hard and I, this is really hard. It's just that if we're going to be committed to keeping the parks closed, it just seems, you know, that they should all.
We can do that.
All right, thank you.
And I'll, very expense, council member Schmidt, we'll have one of the public works crew get it tomorrow, we'll start that tomorrow.
I'll bring it by in the morning.
Thanks, Barry. Appreciate that.
And then the last, sorry, the last one was the signs about mask wearing and I know you said, I think summer up somewhere, but like, you know, like I didn't know, is there one at Sutton Loop Park? There's a lot of spaces that people are doing sort of gathering type stuff at and, which is fine if they're six feet apart, but just reminding people that you still do have to wear a mask.
Based on your emails, we, we ordered different signs that had more, I can't remember if it was a one you forwarded to me or maybe a resident brought it up. I, I just, the idea of the visual of the mask. We had, we had to order those. We ordered 25 of those as well. The signs we have that up now just say park closed. They didn't say the mask wearing yet because at the time when we ordered those signs, that was not a.
Sure.
I know Laura Miller ordered those last week after we first got those emails. I don't know exactly when they're going to be in, but it should be soon and going to put them up at each and every park.
Great, thank you.
And then I believe it was council member Crossley has somebody else, a friend of hers that's dropping, I believe that's dropping off additional signage. She offered it for free. We thank her, we'll take anything we can get.
Is there signage available for our businesses?
So the signage that the health department is making is largely for businesses or for public spaces and so I'm, I connected a coworker to Anthony and Laura and Janine Beck with the Mid County Chamber to see if any of their partner organizations would be interested. And so I'm happy to continue doing that if other Maplewood businesses are interested as well. They're pretty big too, so.
And sell these things, you know, to everyone, you know. It's important that people know that they can come to Maplewood and be in a safe environment as opposed to.
Apparently it doesn't matter what we put up. People are going to do what they're going to do anyway, which is ridiculous, but you know, there's got to be, I just, it just pains me to see that, you know, the responsibility, the self-responsibility that people should be taking to protect others is just gone by the wayside and even with their children. The fact that they would allow them on a park is just mind-boggling to me, so I'm glad we're doing it all, don't get me wrong. I just, you know, people need to think about science again.
And are there any other parts of the memo that people wanted to discuss?
You had some, some questions about the items related to concerns about unhoused people. Anthony, you said that you've had some complaints, some increased volume of concerns about unhoused people and said that the food stations placed around town and a change in our police officers' actions toward unhoused people have exacerbated issues and I was wondering if you could tell us more about the change in police officer actions and what, what makes.
Also those issues, I'm not, I want to make sure people understand that we're not being critical of those because the food stations, you know, that's a great idea and it's clearly good intentions. Same thing with the police officer actions. Essentially the food stations, there's been, there's one place at Yale, there's one at Sutton Loop. It's a, it's a, like I said, it's a local group that's doing a lot of good things for town, for the town, but they're basically leaving food out in the open. It, it's a, it's a, like I said, it's a local group that's doing a lot of good things for town, for the town, but they're basically leaving um, food out in the open. Some of it could be, you know, even fresh fruits or vegetables and it's in the heat and it's basically unregulated, which goes against the county's health codes. Uh, food pantries have their own requirements. And so that's in our parks, which is I'm concerning because it's creating liability for the city. That's one thing that we believe is potentially drawing more because the numbers have dramatically increased within just a couple of weeks. The um, police officer actions, again, it's not that they're not taking action. It's what they're trying to do is um, in the past, what would happen is if, if there was a potentially a unhoused person that is um, on trespassing, a business wants to have them off their property or they were in a park after hours, they would essentially be uh, given other options for housing or where to go. And then they would be asked to leave immediately. What they've done recently is we've been trying to um, arrange meetings with our social worker that we all met uh, maybe a couple of months ago or six weeks ago. And so we, we, the police officers and even the social workers gone out into uh, the parks and we have several of these homeless people and tried to essentially arrange meetings with them to provide counsel and also provide an alternative location for these people. The problem is, we've had two such meetings. Um, we get a, a large number of people say they'll be there. We've only had one person show for these two meetings and it was the same person. For both meetings. So what's really happening is, you know, there's a, hey, the Maplewood police aren't going to really do anything and it seems like it's kind of um, that's exacerbated the problem. And so particularly in Kellogg Park, we've had to stop renting Kellogg Park now for um, probably the last week or 10 days. Uh, they, there's a, there's a group of homeless people that are um, that basically stay in the pavilion all day. They used to camp along Deer Creek in the woods. Now they've moved some of their camping gear to the homes behind Circle Drive, which is actually people's backyards and private property. So we're trying to take a um, an approach where we're trying to, to work with these homeless people and trying to, or unhoused people to try to find a, a place. And uh, for them to stay, we, we've actually found uh, shelter for them. They just have not showed any interest in, in taking it. And so um, I was just.
And we had, we had this discussion with the mayor and police department. Chris Beavens was uh, was in attendance in answering questions. And uh, yeah, it's been frustrating for her because they've reached out to quite a few people and uh, and I guess there's a lot of people out there uh, that do not have homes that they, they don't want to uh, go into a shelter situation uh, because they, they would be restricted from doing drugs and, and drinking alcohol. And.
People also have um, experienced trauma. Sometimes shelter situations are not safe and they're concerned about safety. So there, there are um, a lot of reasons that people might be hesitant about using services. So it's, we have, that there's two concerns that one is issues about around Kellogg Park in particular.
Yale, Yale, the Yale Loop, that's where we had the assault dimension where the individual was hospitalized. Yale is, Yale and Manchester is probably equally bad.
But that's like an unrelated incident. They were fighting over some.
Something else. I don't, I don't.
Be there.
Pardon me?
I guess i- in, in reading the further detail about that one, it seemed like that was related to a separate incident though, not necessarily there being food box there.
Right. Yeah.
I, I guess I'm not, I, I guess we can't necessarily blame that on the food box. Um, I do know there is a large cabinet there that.
I'm not, I'm not trying to blame anything. Make that clear. I'm not trying to blame, I'm just saying these are the two variables that have changed. The, the shelter at Yale, one of the individuals that, that actually brings a TV out there and they actually watch TV as they're eating, you know, and hanging out. That, that fight started over.
Is that a concern?
Pardon? When there's violence there and, and we're getting a lot of complaints, they're defecating on the sidewalk, that, that, those are all problems.
Pulling out the TV and plugging it in a concern.
No, I'm just, I may explaining the, the idea that, that it's become a regular hangout, so much so that they're bringing a TV in. Um, we actually have a home person I said in there that comes into city hall daily and, and bathes in the uh, the, the sink goes around all the closed barriers. So I mean, this is all taking place in, in, in two weeks. And, and again, we had historically, we had between one to three homeless people in town. There was, it's always been a problem and it's a really unfortunate, like you said, there's a lot of reasons behind this. And, and we've, and within two weeks, we've gone up to, you know, between 15 to 18. So I mean, there's something going on there. Um, and.
I, I think some of that too is just what's going on in our economy. I mean, I think we're going to see more people who are unhoused. And who, because I will say, you know, I find those, those food boxes to be amazing because I mean, almost every time I've gone to put food in, there has been an actual resident because they, they see the person coming or leaving who's coming to get food. And so I don't, I don't want to cut that service off if we can provide it. I understand that maybe, maybe if there's a way we need to shift it. So.
There are, there are shelters in town. There are three of them and um, they can actually work in coordination with those shelters. Those shelters are regulated by the county health department. Therefore, we would not have that liability. Uh, city, city attorney Hessels, I can obviously explain the liability issues, but especially.
A concern about providing shelter for unhoused people. This is the, the, the mini, the existence of the mini pantries is providing food for food insecure residents who are housed residents in our community, but who are food insecure. I mean, and I think that we.
I'm not trying to draw correlations.
That we're about, that we're in the middle of a pandemic, that PPP program is about to run out, that Spire and Ameren and the utilities are about to start cutting off service and that um, people are, that this um, we're about to, we're on the cusp of a depression and that um, people are going to be hurting. So I want to make sure that we're prioritizing people in how we um, embody our work in how we take care of people in Maplewood.
We're not saying that you can't have shelters. We have, we have food shelters. We have three of them. The issue is that they're on city property and regulated right now. That's the concern. And if you have legal questions about legal exposure, which is my concern, city attorney Hessels on the call, he can easily uh, answer any questions, comments or concerns you have.
And then in conversations about this and you're talking about the food, that's a, obviously that's a kind gesture. And I know that everybody's intentions are good. But keep in mind, in this pandemic, the, the touching of the food by one person followed by touching of a food by another person. So if you have a bag of carrots out there, a fresh fruit, and people are picking it up and putting it down, that's a health risk that the city is now aware of. And we need to do the best we can to accommodate everyone. But what, recognizing that we have some health issues. Similarly, when people are housing together or living together in close proximity to each other, we have the same kind of concerns and issues. It's a, there's no easy answer to this. And I know that the administration is doing everything they possibly can to balance the interests of the people, as you said, Eleanor. That, that, that's of course the city's goal. We understand that, but it's there has to be certain regulations in place so that we are protecting each other as well.
So I have a question because I know Richmond Heights has had one of these food boxes at the heights for a while now, I think. So I guess are you saying that this whole concern are COVID related in terms of transmission of that or regardless of COVID, this would still be a health risk that would leave the city liable? I just want to figure out.
You always have liability from a public health standpoint, but the COVID has obviously exasperated that situation. That's why the county health department and all the health departments are always involved in the distribution of food. The pandemic has certainly made it a more difficult task.
So are we only talking about, you know, some of the food boxes around private property? So are you, because this mentioned shutting down food boxes. So are you strictly speaking about the ones on Maplewood's property? Are you gonna um, ask the private property owners to shut theirs down too?
At this point, I'm just gonna, I'm worried about the ones that are in the, the city. And so again, we know who is um, you know, who, who's working on this. And again, they're putting a ton of effort into it. And like you said, residents are, are behind this and it's, it's a good thing. And so uh, we're going to try to come in touch with the three other um, food pantries in town. You've got Macca Conception, you've got Salvation Army, and then you've got one on Yale as well. So they're somewhat spread out around town to make sure that those are regulated by, by the county health department. And so knowing they're on our property and allowing them, if something happens, that's, that's the concern about legal exposure. Again, we're all for them. We're just trying to make sure it's regulated and where we don't have a legal exposure.
What's been the uh, city's relationship with this organization? Like have they, has the city been communicating with them and guiding them from these resources so that they are not causing any sort of legal liability for the city?
Have we been, I know Laura Miller has met with, with um, one of the individuals not that long ago. I've dealt with another one within that group. They did, they just did a really cool capital or project in Sutton Loop Park. And, and I mean, the stuff they were doing as far as, you know, helping people and deliveries and things of that nature. It's just been fantastic. Again, this is, it's, it's just an issue of you have liability right now by just leaving open food out in parks and we're aware of it. And uh, so something, I mean, we have to do something. It needs to be then a regulated uh, food, food pantry setup. And people can still donate that food and it can still go to needy families. It would just be done through um, regulated means.
The hard part is, is that those resources are open during certain hours. And so I feel like this was a really great resource for people who just needed a meal here or a meal there. So I, I guess if anyone knows of a resource that's local, close, that's open 24 hours, that would be great because I think that's going to be a real.
I mean, there are five other pantry locations in the Maplewood network. But are, is there an issue if it's like water bottles and tinned, tinned food, like shelf-stable food?
Because that's what it's supposed to be, is my understanding. That's all I've ever contributed. They even did a, they, they, I know they checked for food safety and put certain screens and linings in so that the food doesn't get too hot. So I guess um, but so I do know that they've considered food safety in, in them.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I know that uh, some of the uh, food closets are located on faith-based
Yeah.
organization site. Um, and there's lots more uh, in Maplewood that don't have them. Wondering if we can't work with them a little bit and see if we can't you know, get them to house one of the closets. And most of them are close enough to one of our parks where, you know, if there was a homeless person and he needed food, he could get it and he could sit down and eat it, but it wouldn't be there on the park per se. I believe Laura Miller was, Sean was involved with one that you were talking about. They actually did years ago get uh, slapped on the wrist by the county health department and they had to make some changes for safety protocols and they follow those now. Um, so that, that's the idea. We're not going to just say go away. We're gonna, we're gonna, and we already have mentioned it to them in the past. But here are some other options. Here are some contacts and we'll work with them in any way we can. I mean, um, I wanted you guys to be aware. Because again, it's, it's tough when you hear, hey, why is the city doing this? It's, you know, it's not like, you know, regulating some girl's selling cookies somewhere and throwing her in jail or, you know, issuing tickets. You always see this, the, the heavy-handed city approach. We're not trying, it's not trying to take that. We don't disagree with what they're, what they're trying to do. It's um, well-intended. I want to make sure um, if we can work with them and work with some of the organizations that are existing right now, we can hopefully still achieve what they're doing. It might be a little bit more regulation, but at least it'll be done according to the county's health regulations.
So are you saying that the one at like the Yale um, bus shelter, you would want to move it? Or that if they follow certain guidelines, they might be able to stay?
Well, at this point, they would need to move it. And there's a church just north of that, probably about, about a block and a half. And then the Macca Conception is uh, just south of that, probably another block and a half.
Yeah, they have it already. There's a Baptist church rather that they could also do it as well.
That's my church. We've had that for a while there.
And then there's the hygiene box too, is that a Maculate conception?
We've been asked.
High need in the area.
Well, it sounds like we're still, I mean, I thought Sean, your idea was good to reach out to people who aren't doing it, that make it perhaps relocate them. I think that's a great idea.
No, we're, we're not trying to shut this down. And that's why I want to purpose the conversation, good intentions. I mean, and, and it's, and it's a great idea. Need to see the community get behind it like they have. We just said it, it, the other two that are so close, you're, you're literally talking a block and a half, or a block and a half to the south.
Right. Um, can uh, does, you said Laura's in um, regular contact with the leaders of Maplewood?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, personally, uh, I'd like to hold, have the city hold off on moving any of those food boxes until they can be arranged to be put somewhere else.
Absolutely. Absolutely. No question.
I don't, and I, I know we're going to have a homeless problem and it's just beginning. Um, the city, as one of our um, uh, attendees has pointed out, has, have been um, kicking out homeless people all over the city. And so they're, you know, finding refuge elsewhere. And of course, Maplewood is a you know, good go-to place, easy for them to get to. So, um, but, but I don't, I agree that, that food insecurity is a huge deal. And uh, I really like Maplewood to, you know, work with Maplewood and see if we can't get those placed somewhere else, uh, if there is a liability. And if we can't, um, maybe we need to explore some way that we can do it uh, safely because I don't think this is going away.
And you know, Sean, I, I add what you said, I've, I've, you know, with the school being virtual now, I've heard a lot of different, you know, I've read a lot of different stories how many children are, are essentially hungry and they rely on school meal too. So I mean, anything you can do to keep it, you know, active.
Right.
Does, does anyone know if uh, if uh, Salvation Army offers a place for, for people to, to uh, take baths or clean up? Because we, you know, that sanitation is another problem. I know that uh, I've received calls from people who have people stripping down to their underpants and using the uh, neighbor's hose to clean themselves off. And you know, so it's not just food, it's sanitation. It's a whole range of, of other issues. You know, that need to be addressed. And I'm not sure, especially uh, I see someone has responded. They say they do not, no place in Maplewood has public showers. And uh, I appreciate the people chiming in on, on the chat. Uh, and uh, you know, the, obviously these, these are problems and issues that uh, a lot of communities have, have been dealing with and uh, some more successful than others. But uh, we need to find some uh, some resources uh, within our city that would allow us to uh, to assist the people who, who don't have a place to live. And I, I don't know what the answer is.
I think there's an opportunity with all of the CARES Act dollars that St. Louis County has and the investment that's being made into housing and humanitarian crises to be better connected to those services. I know the county department of human services leads a whole um, host of programs. I know there's a net, there are networks upon networks of nonprofits that we might be able to um, connect with. Um, I think one of the, from the little that I've been engaged in understanding success and supporting unhoused populations, one of the key components really is building a relationship with individuals who are unhoused. Um, it's not surprising to me that someone who's unhoused misses an appointment with the social worker. They may have just met for the first time. Um, I'm a housed person who misses and cancels appointments all the time and I don't have a whole plethora of other issues that I'm navigating. Um, and so I wonder if there's a way for us to get in as soon as possible with different organizations who might be able to provide better supports and could connect them to things like a cooling shelter or something like that.
That's what, that's what Christine Beavan has been trying to do. She's actually pulling out, not only if they didn't show for the meeting, she's actually sought out the, the unhoused individuals. And she is, is an excellent contact. She's, she's one of the experts in the region on it. So uh, she has been going out to the unhoused individuals and doing exactly what, what you said, council member Crossley. And, and we will continue to do so.
Great. And I think if there are opportunities to just. Great, and I think if there are opportunities to, just within Maple, like neighbors who may know a person, um, relying on personal connections that those individuals may have, might be helpful as well. Um, I mean, there's no, there's no too few networks or relationships that we could leverage to help connect people to resources.
It would also be helpful if, uh, we had a list of resources, you know, I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of everyone approaching, you know, some of these unhoused, you know, people. Typically, they haven't been wearing masks, which is a little bit of a problem too. But a list of resources that you could, you know, give to them that, uh, that you don't necessarily have to send a social worker out, but maybe they could utilize at least one of those resources to, uh, you know, to move forward and, uh, you know, and, and see what's available to them.
I'll just read some comments from the chat really quickly. So we have, um, uh, our neighbors acknowledging that there are nearly almost one thousand residents active in the Maplewood group. Um, and they are, uh, would be willing to support, um, us, to support us as a community in, in supporting, um, all of our neighbors. Um, Maplewood has built relationships with, um, some of the unhoused folks, um, but also they have built relationships with our housed folks who, um, they are working with. And they are, um, one of their food, the food pantries on FOCUS are feeding approximately fifty families per day. Um, Sarah, did you have, um, also, you had mentioned, um, that the, um, Office of Family and Community Services in the county, we might be able to connect with them about what kind of resources they can connect us with, so that we don't replicate-
Yeah. They have, they have access to, um, federal funding, usually their standard federal funding in addition to CARES Act dollars, that might be helpful here, um, and are building out massive programs in response to COVID-nineteen and, you know, the influx of unhoused individuals who are at higher risk. And, um, they might be a good resource for us.
Yeah. Obviously, we, you know, we need to continue this discussion. At this point though, uh, is there any, any more of the city managers' report that needs to be addressed?
I, sorry, I just wanted to highlight, it looks like based on our communications and then the pool put it out today, the pool is going to remain open till seven, three days a week, which is nice. For those patrons who work nine to five, they'll still be able to attend, go to the pool at least some during the week, so. Cause I know they had released something last week saying it was gonna close at six, and now they've changed that to allow for three days. So, for anyone listening, just so they're aware.
And I wanted to let the council know that, um, all the employees involved in nuisance areas attended an excellent training session of domestic violence, you guys have read that. Um, we're, we're gonna probably get that same speaker out, meet with all police officers separately. It's fantastic.
So, will the council get, get to have that kind of training too, or listen in on any of that, or is that just by the-
Yeah, we can definitely let you know when it-
Interest, you know, I think it would be a good thing to, to know about too.
Yeah, we can-
Comes to hearing ordinances and stuff, so we have a, a good understanding of how all that works.
Thank you, Karen.
Karen, we can absolutely do that. Um, we'll, we'll definitely get, I'll get that, and basically either schedule that, or we could even tape the session if it's easier for the council. They can watch it at their leisure, or they wanna come up, that's fine. And then we've, we're also, um, the Finance Officers Association had a, uh, a good equity training seminar a month back or two months back, and Karen Dilber's reaching out to that speaker as well, and we're gonna try to get all city employees into that. And we'll do the same thing if people, cause we have a lot of shift work, we can't necessarily get everyone in, but what we can do is we can record the session and then essentially require that employees would watch that when they're on, on duty. So we're gonna work on that as well, just to, just to update the council. I have, unless anyone else has any additional questions.
Okay. Uh, item number sixteen is the second public forum. Do we have anyone with the raised hands out there?
Can we just remind people how to do that in case someone's not here? If someone hasn't done this before, I think that'd be helpful.
Who wants to explain the, the procedure?
Yeah, typically, if you just, uh, am I still muted? No. You just right-click on, if you have a PC, if you just right-click on yourself, you can raise your hand. I'm not sure how to do it on an iPod, but it's, it's not a, uh, it's not a difficult thing, uh-
No. On the iPad, you go up to the right-hand corner where it says more, and you have chat, webinar settings, virtual background, and raise hand. So, yeah, go ahead.
All right, we, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Heidi Helmut, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, bring Heidi in.
Okay, again, uh, preceding the public forum, I would like to, uh, you know, I would like for people to, uh, limit their, their comments to three minutes or less, and try not to repeat what other, uh, you know, provide new or additional information, so-
To do the, the address as well as your name, please, too.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, how you doing?
Hi, so I'm Heidi Helmut, I live at seven four four two Maple Avenue. I wanted to say one thing, but before that, I just wanna say how happy I am to hear the previous discussion. I think it was a very robust discussion about, um, the food pantries and dealing with, uh, the underprivileged in this community, and it makes me so optimistic to live in Maplewood. So thank you so much for all the thoughtfulness you put into that discussion. Um, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I was talking, listening about the skate park, and I have a very low-tech idea that you might wanna consider. It's something that actually came up when I discussed with, can you still hear me?
Yeah. Not now, though.
All right, I think I'm back, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you hear anything I said?
Skate park.
Something about low-tech.
Okay, so perfect, now I know where I am. So this idea came up when talking with a friend years ago about how to have a trampoline in your yard and not have the liability of people you don't know coming and using it when you're not there. And I think the same solution might work for the skate park. And it's simply to put in some eye bolts and then put chains across it. So if you just put some eye bolts into the concrete and crisscross it with a few chains, you literally can't skate. Same thing, you can't jump on the trampoline. So it's an idea that had come up years ago, might help with the skate park, I just wanted to share it, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else, uh, with the raised hand?
Um, yes, Amber Withcom. Amber, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you, Anthony. This is Amber Withcom, uh, thirty-three, thirty-nine Cambridge Avenue. And like Heidi, I, uh, appreciate the conversation that we've been having about the unhoused population and particularly the efforts that Maplewood is making to meet needs for everyone in our community, housed and unhoused. I just wanna clarify a few items. Um, the first is that each of those pantries, and I know because I co-manage one, um, I co-manage the, uh, hygiene box in front of, uh, Immaculate Conception. Each of them is visited twice a day for replenishment and cleaning, um, people are wearing gloves and masks. Uh, we have the opportunity at those moments to, uh, check in and converse with, uh, our neighbors who are making use of those boxes. And again, we have a lot of, uh, anecdotal data that shows that a large portion of them are housed, food insecure individuals. Uh, that being said, I think it's, you know, been noted by a few council members, this problem will only continue to grow in our community. And given the enormous, uh, need, and likewise, the enormous number of people, and I will say it is a large number of people who are participating in Maplewood's efforts, either formally or informally. If the, uh, city has suggestions for how we can be involved in coming, um, and supporting systemic solutions to this, I think you know that you have a cohort of people ready to engage in that work. I, I do find it disappointing that, uh, liability seems to be the sole focus in the conversation of where those boxes were located. I think that we could probably come to some solutions that meet, uh, county health guidelines better. And again, you've got a lot of very intelligent, capable people managing this effort. So, collaboration and communication will be welcomed. And, uh, again, I thank you for the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Amber. You know, I have a, a front-row view of the, uh, Immaculate Conception, uh, box, uh, and I, while I'm doing construction, it's, it's really well taken care of, I, I appreciate the fact that, uh, you're involved in that. Uh, do we have anyone else, Anthony?
No, sir.
Okay. So, uh, with that, is, I don't believe that there is a motion to hold a closed session, is that correct?
There's not, but, um, end of my report, I, I believe, uh, we do have, uh, Councilmember Schmidt, if we could, we could either go in executive session, there's some, there were some questions about, possibly if anyone has questions about, from Council or City Attorney Hessel about, um, uh, personnel matters, is, but what's, what's, uh, discoverable, what's closed, what's open? We can do that in a session if anyone has questions. Um, if you're looking for actual legal advice about what's open or what's a closed record, um, we could do that in closed session. It's really whatever, whatever the, the nature of the question is.
Oh, I, yeah, I thought we were just talking generally, sort of a overview of, uh-
Do that too, it's really whatever you want. I just told, I forwarded, uh, various emails to City Attorney Hessel and said you may be getting some questions on these. So if anyone, any council member has any questions, they, they can ask him now, and if he believes we need to close a session, we could do that. I scheduled that just in case, but I believe we could do this in open session.
Uh, I think I, I, so I, yeah, I sort of understood all that, cause I was really just trying to understand process, like city process. So, um, I'm not for, I don't have any questions prepared, I'd have to get my thoughts around what my questions would be before we did that. So if we could do that another time?
Absolutely, if anyone has any questions, you can even, um, you can even forward them to me, and I can get them out earlier. And then we can, we can have, we can put those, I can put those as part of my, uh, city manager memo. But, uh, Speaker, well, we can go ahead and ask him any question, right, right, uh, Mr. Hessel?
Yeah, or, or any council member, as, as you've done, you can email me on particular questions. I don't like giving legal advice by email, because you, if you change any of the facts in your email, I could give you a different answer. Dealing with closed records is a subject matter that will be part of our little, uh, work session, call it that. So, um, I would encourage you to, if you have individual instances that arise that you wanna talk to me about, you can pick up the phone and call me, send me an email, and I'll, I prefer to talk rather than send an email, um, with you. Happy to do it that way. And I'm like, I don't know that we need anything this evening, seems to me.
I just wanna make sure if anyone has questions, we can, for the most part, I believe this would be an open session item, is, is my point. I think we could do that, but just in case it, there, there were actually closed session issues, I, I scheduled it, but I, I don't see any need to have one, I don't have any, any reason, but I just put that on there just in case.
Thank you.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much for, uh, not only council members, but the people participating online. Be safe out there, please.
Thank you, see you guys later.
Thank you.
Thank you.